Thomas, can you make me a co-host, please?
Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council meeting for October 7th of 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. Just so you know, last time we checked, the Mariners were up 6-1 in the top of the ninth in Detroit. Yeah, I know, getting close. Council President, do you have a motion?
Lydia, is she on?
I don't think Councilmember Asaph Dawson is... She was here.
I'm Ma.
Oh, there we go. The records reflect that Councilmember Asaph Dawson is present remotely. Good to see, good to hear your voice, Councilmember, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I move to remove ordinance item 7A, 2025 to 2026, Biennial Budget Amendment Number Two.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passed unanimously. Great, thank you very much. All right, now we will go on to proclamations and presentations. We'll have Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, October 2025. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you so much. Is Ada here? Hi, do you want to come up to the podium? And I will read the proclamation and present it to you, and then you can speak for a little bit if you'd like. This is Domestic Violence Month, and, you know, as we all know, domestic violence is an epidemic in our country. It impacts individuals in every neighborhood, in every community. It's about power and control, and the trauma of domestic violence can last a lifetime. The Federal Way Domestic Violence Task Force has created a brochure. It looks like this, and we have them in our high schools and at St. Francis Hospital. And they're designated mostly for youth because youth, we wanted to help our youth in our schools understand what domestic violence was and that there was help available. But just thought I would talk about that. So the proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas, according to the Washington Association of Sheriff and Police Chiefs, police respond to about 50,000 domestic violence calls every year in Washington. And whereas, even with the significant number of calls responded to by police, 70% of domestic violence that occurs goes unreported. And whereas, although men and children can be victims of domestic violence, it is committed mostly against women and is the leading cause of injury to women between the ages of 15 and 44 in the United States. And whereas, children that grow up in violent homes and experience domestic violence are impacted in their education and are more likely to continue the cycle of abuse and domestic violence in relationships. And whereas, in response to the prevalence of domestic violence in this community, promotion of prevention, victim safety, community awareness, and abuser accountability is accomplished through organizations, education, and outreach. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we urge citizens to band together to work to prevent and eliminate this crime. Sign this 7th day of October, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. My name is Ada Onyali, and I'm honored to be here on behalf of DAWN, Domestic Abuse Women's Network. Our executive director, Gina Finley, is unavoidably absent, but sends her best wishes. First, thank you for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for taking this time to shine a light on an issue that too often remains hidden behind closed doors. Every October, we come together to raise awareness. But for survivors, the need for safety, support, and healing continues long after this month ends. Each night, women, children, and families find refuge in DAWN's shelter because of your ongoing support. Behind every number is a real person, a mother who can finally sleep without fear, a child who begins to laugh again, a survivor who takes their first step toward a life free from violence. Your partnership truly changes lives. But awareness alone isn't enough. It takes consistent investment of funding, time, and compassion to ensure that DAWN can continue to answer every call for help every single day of the year. On behalf of DAWN and the countless survivors who have found hope and safety through your support, thank you for standing with us. Together, we are building a community where safety, dignity, and hope are possible for everyone. We answer over 400 calls each month, and we want to continue to be there for survivors. And thanks to your generous support, we have served 142 residents of Federal Way so far this year and counting. And this month, we invite you to visit our website and follow Sierra's journey each week, an interactive experience that brings life, the difficult choices survivors face, and the impact your support makes. You will also find other ways to get involved with us at our website, and that is www.dawnrising.org. That is D-A-W-N-R-I-S-I-N-G.org. Another way to celebrate survivors is to attend the Art Against Silence, a survivor art show featuring art from our clients this Sunday, October 12th, in Renton. Again, our website is a great place to find more information. Thank you so much, and we are very honored to receive this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the important work you do, you and your colleagues do every day. All right, and now we are on to the Mayor's Emergency Issues and Report. We'll have Ben Miller help out with the slides. That's me at the Taste of Federal Way. We'll talk about that in a moment. It's been a busy couple of weeks. We had an extra week between our, between our council meetings. And so this was, this was the grand opening of the Veterinary Emergency Group, or VEGE, Emergency Room Ribbon Cutting, and a great job by the Chamber with a great ribbon cutting and a great opening, and it's a beautiful facility. This is right next to the Sierra and the Safeway on 320th. And as you could see, you could barely make it out there. That's the very first patient of the Federal Way location of the VEG ER Emergency Room. That is a little tiny kitten. And right when Ben and I walked in, a little girl brought this in in that towel that's, you know, right there to the left. And when they opened it up, this little tiny baby kitten had this huge laceration on its back. And so they were, right when we walked in, they went immediately to work. It was the very first patient at the ER there, and they, we called back the next day, and the kitty made it. And that little girl's gonna, it was, it was actually a stray tiny kitten found in her front yard, and she wanted to make sure that she could keep the little kitten. So she came back and got it, and it made it. And so, you know, what's really, this is a really beautiful location, state-of-the-art, really. And if patients want, if the owners want to stick with their patients during the whole process, when the doctors are there, they can, they could even be in the surgery room. And so they've got these, really sort of a wide-open concept for this emergency room right there in 320th. Now, you know, our animals are, they're more than just our pets. They're, they're members of the family, and we've all had situations, me, all of us over the years, but just a few, just, I think about two months ago, you know, I was in a pet emergency room for six hours waiting. And we've all got stories like that because we will, because they're members of our family. Here, they've got plenty of staff. It's going to be open 24 hours a day, and that really is a great amenity for our community. And you should just poke your head in next time you're, next time you're over at the Safeway or the Sierra Store or the workout facility. Okay, and we had several council members appear for that in the community, and it was great. Okay, we had the Good Eggs Breakfast. That's something that our King County Councilman Pete Von Rechbauer has been conducting for years, where we have regional leadership. Those are the South King County mayors, along with the person who gave the presentation, our state auditor, Pat McCarthy. She is the former, before that, she was the Pierce County Executive, and she is serving now as the state auditor, and she gave a great presentation to the elected leader group there, and that was back on September 17th. Then we had, on September 18th, the very next day, we had Make an Impact Fundraiser, really a tremendous opportunity to, you know, reward and acknowledge the great work done by our arts community, the Arts Foundation, our Arts Commission, who does such a fantastic job. And it was absolutely packed, as you could see, and they did a really good job. And it was, or they had the Decatur High School jazz band, and it was just absolutely fantastic. Later that same night, I went from that to the Korean Quarterly Meeting, same evening. There's former Mayor Michael Park, former mayor and council member. That was also in the evening of September 18th here in council chambers. Then the next day, I took a tour of the Operation Maintenance Facility, and it is shaping up to be quite a facility. This is so long overdue. We are very excited about this. EJ gave me, gave me and Ben and Brian the 50-cent tour, probably more like the dollar tour. And it's really going to, you know, not only house, you know, all of our equipment and make sure that it's a much more secure form any kind of vandalism and theft, but also a great place for not only public works but Parks staff. It's going to be really a big piece of the infrastructure of our community, where we keep all of our heavy-duty tools and trucks and all that. So it's taking shape. And EJ, it's going to open up early next year, right?
You nailed it.
All right, all right, very good. We'll keep it, we'll keep it early next year-ish. Okay, very good, thank you. Next day, actually on September 20th, Pete Von Rechbauer again had the South King County Athlete Breakfast. I think the entire council or close to it was at the Emerald Downs. Pete did a great job. We had the general manager of the Seahawks as well as Steve Rabel, the legendary former receiver and Cairo newscaster. And there's Councilmember Walsh and I enjoying a breakfast. But like I said, we, the table of our council members was full, so it was great to see all those folks. It was great to see, you know, the GM of our, of our Seahawks and to hear about what's going on. And all that money that Pete raised with the auction and the breakfast and all of that will go to our South King County athletes to make sure they've got the resources. So the, you know, many of the athletic teams from Kent and Auburn and Federal Way were present with their coaches and the players. It was a very nice breakfast. It was a packed room, and Pete is just an invaluable resource, and it was just great to see. And we had business people there from all over the region as well. On September 20th, we had the Federal Way and Tacoma Community Cleanup. Pictured with me there are Ruby Gabriel and Rhysen Nelson, part of Tidy Up Tacoma. And this was, this is down there on the BPA Trail, 356th. And actually, Councilmember Honda and I were there pretty much simultaneously, and other council members were there as well. And it was a great opportunity for us to focus on the important work of cleaning up our community. All right, next. This was really fun. Our, you know, Wendy and I, our son, attended Illahi Middle School and before the remodel, so it was really great. Whenever you see a new school ribbon cutting, it was just, it's always great to see. And man, 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 it is a beautiful new school that's going to be there for decades and decades to come. There's our school board members and our superintendent, and I believe the mascot there, and council members and members of the community. It was a very, a very great event. And, you know, what's nice when they do these is the, the school actually has the student leaders be the emcee, so it was a great event. Next, we've got, you know, we've had some great, just in the past month, a number of new businesses in our community, but this is actually, ESM is one of the longstanding businesses in our community, and they needed more space and a different space, and they decided they really wanted to stay in Federal Way. So they moved over to the 32nd Avenue on the other side of the freeway in really a beautiful room, and they, it's the, it's right up there at 32nd, great view of the mountain. And yeah, Ben, we should have got a picture of the mountain in this picture. I'm just kidding. So, you know, we, they had a big grand opening, and they are settling into that new space, and they, they do engineering, obviously, and, and it's a company that we work with quite a bit here at the city. Then we had the Hachinoa Student City Hall Visit. These were junior high students from, from Japan, from our sister city in Japan on September 25th of this year. It was great to see them, and, and they had a lot of really good questions and spoke, they spoke amazing Japanese, excuse me, they spoke amazing English. And I had this whole phrase I had memorized about how, you know, my name and, and I'm the mayor of Federal Way, and they all looked at me quizzically, and I was mispronouncing the words. So it was, it was a good effort, right? So anyway, they did a lot better than I did, and it was great to see them, and that was in my, in my conference room back there. Then, the next day, we had, which is really an amazing opening, talking about new businesses, the Island Pacific Seafood Market, and that ribbon cutting was on September 26th. That's right there, over there by Trapper Sushi on three, on Pacific Highway, just north of 320th on the west side. We could not believe how many people were there. It was just absolutely jam-packed. It is a more of a Filipino-themed food, but it's, it's really got all kinds of food in the, and that is fish market and all kinds of restaurants. There's a restaurant hall, and it was great entertainment, and like I said, it was absolutely jam-packed to get in there. We escaped from the jam-packed area, and we cut the ribbon outside, and it was great to see everybody there. Okay, then we had the Taste of Federal Way. I think we had well over 600 people there. Bill, how many tickets do you think we sold?
That's 600, including all the volunteers and sponsors.
Yeah.
The sale tickets are roughly $3.90 from the organizations that benefit from it, and then the balance takes this, right now, we're trying to reconcile it, between 560 and 580 tickets.
Yeah, that's great. Well, great job. You know, the market would have never happened without Bill Vedino. Let's give Bill Vedino a big round of applause. This is our first year that the city has taken, taken it on. We have really a debt of gratitude to the Rose and David Eel and their daughter Carla Colabob. And Carla is helping us now in the Parks Department, working with the market. Also, Vicky Chenoweth is doing a phenomenal job. Carla's the, the manager over there, and boy, do they do it right. That's me and Kealan with the mirror posing for the cameras as we were judges for the food, and you could see the crowd shot there. It was really fun, it was great. The whole, I kept telling everybody, the whole secret of this is you can't eat everything on your plate. You'll end up being too full, and every year I fail in that directive. So anyway, it was great. We had the recycling event at the South King Tool Library, and that was the same day. And we are, that's just a great event and just a great resource at the South King Tool Library. We had the Federal Way Co-op Preschool Spaghetti Feed. Councilmember Honda and I were both there, September 29th, at 2025 of this year. And it was there at Genos, right at the end of 320th and 46th, or Hoyt right there. Boy, it was absolutely fantastic. Okay, we've got some upcoming community events. We've got the Repair Cafe on October 11th, and that's again over at the, at the Tool Library. That's at 1700 South 340th Street, so actually over there where the Masonic Temple Lodge is. Then we've got the Mayor's Day of Concern Grocery Food Drive. That's this Saturday, and you can donate either at your home. How to donate? You can, you know, do it, leave a bag out by your, this week, out in front of your, your cans, or come out to Fred Meyer and one of the other grocery stores. Bill?
Grocery Outlet and Safeway on 320th.
Very good.
And the Grocery Outlet, they're very delighted to be meeting you all because they're the new franchisees. So they're a great couple, and so they're looking forward to your attendance.
Yeah, that Grocery Outlet is phenomenal. You know, we just really well-lit and well, well-merchandised, and it's a lot of fun. It's right there at essentially 312th and Dash Point Road. Okay, and obviously the Fred Meyer. We're going to gather for a picture for, for the council and for the volunteers, probably 10:00 AM on Saturday. Then we've got the Pumpkin Plunge on the next Saturday at the Community Center. That starts, John, what time's the Pumpkin Plunge? It doesn't say here. It's Saturday, October 8th at the Community, October 18th at the Community Center.
I am going to have to get back to you on the exact time, sir. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, let's go back a step. On the, the food drive, just to reiterate, Safeway, Grocery Outlet on Dash and 312, and the Fred Meyer, it'll go from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Okay, also, let's see here, we've got, the final farmer's market is going to be on October 25th. So two weeks from this Saturday, and make sure you get out there and, and it's just, this year it's really been great, and part of that greatness, John, has to do with you and your staff, making sure the tents look great, the place is really well-organized. It's really just a real value added. We've got the Drive-Thru Recycling Event at South King County Tool Library on October 25th, and that'll include mattresses, tires, document shredding. And then we've got Tricks and Treats at the Community Center on the October 25th, and that's at 3:00 to 5:30. So 3:00 to 5:30 at the Community Center. This Friday, we have the Super Supper, and for that, we're going to turn it over to Councilmember Doby. Tell us about this Friday's Super Supper.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. For all of you that may or may not know about the Super Supper, this is put on by the Federal Way Community Caregivers. It's a nonprofit group that has nobody getting a salary. They feed people. They also give rent assistance in our community, and they were the ones who sponsor the community gardens. This is an opportunity to come to Christian Faith Center. I believe the tickets are $10? I think $20? Anyway, I was on the board for that group for a very, very long time, and in the old days, you used to come, and we'd bring soup, and they'd have bowls that you can pick up and you take it home, and storing those bowls over the years was a lot of work. Now it's Cafe Pacific. John Hatcher prepares all the soups. The cakes come from different places here in Federal Way. The volunteers put it together, and it's a great time of fellowship and giving back to those in need in our community. So that's Friday, the 10th, and 5 o'clock, is it not?
5:30.
5:30. And a great thing to come to, and it's a great way to give back to those in need in our city. Thank, thank you, Mayor, for letting me expound on that, because I was a board member there for, I don't know, five years, and my wife's still on the board, and it's just a great organization if anybody's looking for something to volunteer for.
Yeah, the Christian Faith Center, they used to do it in the big room, but now are they, you think they're still going to be on the side there? So in the western side of the building is where they have it.
It'll be well-marked on how to get in there.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so when you, when you come to Park, everybody, whether you're listening on TV or here, when you show up to CFC, you know, you want to stay to your right, because it's going to be on the left side of the, not the left, it's going to be on the west side of that building, and there'll be signage and all that. So, okay.
Could I add something to that?
Yes, please.
So this is a really important organization, and they do a lot of really good things for people who need help in Federal Way, and there's always empty seats at this event. So I would really encourage you, if you have a couple of hours on Friday night, to please come and support this organization so that they can support people who need help in Federal Way better. It's just a really super great organization, and I hate to see empty seats at something like this. So please come if you can.
Can I, can I make one more comment? One thing that, maybe I should talk about this organization. I remember sitting on this council up here in 1996, I think I sat right there, and a guy by the name of Louis Liu walks in, and he was, he had been around Federal Way forever, and he talks about feeding the homeless and helping people in Federal Way. And in those early days, Gene Burbidge was one of the people, and Louis, and I can't, I think Hope Elder was part of it. And they used to drive around with food in the back of their trunks of their cars. And when they'd get a call on the hotline, one of them would go to help somebody in our community. And that organization has grown from that core, and I still remember Louis Liu standing out there, you know, saying, "Hey, you need to support us," and nobody knew who he was or what he was doing. And it's grown into a very, very valuable nonprofit, helping the needy in our city with a great history, and it's really one of those places, like all of them are, but that's one to, it's... And it's really one of those places, like all of them are, but that's one, it's really a heartfelt thing to support them. And Christian Faith Center stepped up when the Steel Lake Presbyterian was church, was sold, and they didn't have a place to have a meal for our needy, and they do it there. So, it's a great organization. I just remember that when he first came here the first time, and nobody knew what it was. And they were out delivering food, needy out of the trunks of their car.
Louis Liu, that's a name you wouldn't forget. Yeah, very good. All right, thank you. And thank you for your work on that. Okay, thank you, Ben. All right, now we are on to the presentation for the 2024 Audit Comprehensive Financial Report, GFOA Awards for Budgeting and Excellence in Financial Reporting. Steve Groom, our Finance Director, will do the presentation.
Mayor, can I interfere with something first?
Yeah.
Important announcement, Mariners win 8-4.
Hey! That was great.
Thank you. That would have, that, that would have not fit into the middle of what I'm about to show you. And Mayor, thank you for your encouragement, because I know you've been encouraging us to bring the good news of the city's finances a little bit more regularly. And Councilmember Tran, Chair of our Finance Committee, you two have said several times, we need to communicate to our citizens. What I have, let's see, how do I do this? I thought it was just gonna be next.
Steve, could you use the clicker up there?
Yes, I can do that. Thank you. What I have to share with you is that, in a nutshell, the audit for the 2024 financial report for, for the city is done. And I know you're thinking, this is October. Now, those of you sitting here, this is gonna be more entertaining than it sounds. I know this is an audit report, but we know that some of our revenues take two months to come in, and then we can start closing the books for the city, and then we have to go through all these year-end accruals and reconcile bank accounts and stuff. And then we prepare our financial statements. I will point out that all of our budgets and our audits are currently done in Excel, a bunch of linked spreadsheets. We hope to get a new financial system soon that'll, that'll improve that. But then, then we prepare our reports, and then the auditors get to work on it, and it takes them a couple of months. And so, I, just this last week, we got our, our audit posted to the website. And if you go to the City of Federway's website, you go to the Finance page, this is the cover of our audited financial report now, and, and also some familiar faces, right? And the reason those are important is because this cover is designed for financial people, credit analysts, bankers, brokers, what have you, that look at the City of Federway. They may be in Chicago, New York, San Francisco, I don't know. They've never been here. They don't know what it looks like. So, on the cover, I've got our Performing Arts Center, I've got Steel Lake Park, Dumas Bay Retreat Center, I've got our City Hall, and I've got Wild Waves there next to I-5. And so, before they even get to the numbers, I want them to get a sense of the quality that we're about here and the professionalism. So, council members, thank you for wearing a tie for your photos. I put it to use for a real purpose. Once you get inside, now, one of the questions you ask is, well, do we have a clean audit? That's kind of a question that everybody asks. And what does that mean? Our, Mayor, you mentioned Pat McCarthy a moment ago. Her staff, 10 of them scrutinize all of our, all of our, all of our numbers. Once the auditors are done and they have given their professional opinion, what they're, what they're saying is, I've got a little sentence underlined in red, and then I've blown it up big in it. But what it says is, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above are presented fairly. So, the question is, when I show you our finances, can you believe them? Yeah, they've, they've, they've been audited, and that's, that's of, of real value. So, on, so just inside the front cover, we, we get the auditors. Now, I've, I've, I've read one sentence to you. They present a four-page report, if you'd like to read it. But immediately after that, then we get, you know, oh, if I, if I was to back up, the title of this was Audited or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And that word, comprehensive. Oh, my goodness. You, you ask a bunch of accountants to be a comprehensive, and we come up with a 150-page report, as does every city in America, and there are thousands of cities. And in order to make this absolutely uniform and standardized and comparable across the country, why, we, we don't have a whole lot of room to, to do anything different. So, on the very first page, on the, on the very top line where it says Financial Highlights, I've got four bulleted items. Our net position increased, our total revenue increased, our general funds fund balance increased, and our total cash and investment reports. And each of them I put, you can see kind of circled in red there, I've, I've got it pointing to a page you can go look at. And if people were interested enough to follow each of those items and go look up on page 17, you would see this, this is where there's this full page that says that the city's total net position. That's across all funds and programs of the entire city. It increased by 27.5 million. So, our total net position of the whole entire city is $678.6 million. And you can see how that compared to the prior year in the next column. If you were to go to page 20, you would see that the city's revenue last year increased by 30 million over the prior year. But then the expenses also increased, but not as much. They increased 25 million, so that's a net gain of 5 million. And that sounds pretty good, right? If you were to go to page 36, you would see that our fund balance of the general fund, and the general fund, people pay attention to the general fund. That's the, the, the single most important indicator of the city's financial strength. And here you can see that the ending fund balance is 22.7 million. Now, some of you on the diocese are thinking, now, wait a minute, every month we meet at Finance Committee, and we say that the, that the general fund has to be $9 million. Well, government, welcome to government accounting standards. We make it more complicated than it needs to be all, all, all across America. And so, the way that they have us group our funds has us combining general fund and what we call street fund. We, we, we give it a separate fund for our purposes, for budgetary control. But when we're doing the comprehensive annual report, it gets grouped with a few other funds. So, also, also, at, at year end, we do some accounting at the very end, which, as much as we wish we could show monthly, there just isn't enough time every single month to go through the restating investments at fair market value and the once-a-year valuation of pension liabilities. And you get the picture, right? And to find total cash and investments, you'd think you could just go to a balance sheet and find it. But no, you have to go back to page 59. It's the only place where we show all of our assets and liabilities this way and that way and this way. But to get the total of our bank accounts and our investments all in one table, you go back to page 59, and you can find that our total cash and investments was 146 million, which was more than last year. It's 114 million. Now, that, that's as far as I'm gonna go with all of the 100 pages of numbers that you can find in our report. When the auditors look at our financials, they're looking at the 100 pages in the middle. We get to write a little introductory piece, and, and I, I'm just giving you a high-level view. It's six pages. I get to use pictures. I get to use graphs. I get to describe where we are, where we're located in the, in the state, to really flesh out to an uninformed reader or an informed financial reader what we want to say about ourselves in addition to all the audited financials. And if anybody was to go read one thing, I would encourage you, go to our website, read this little executive summary. It might give you everything you ever wanted to know, but I've tried to, we, we've tried to do it in an interesting way, in a way, we use a lot of graphs that make a lot more sense than just walls of numbers. Then at the back of the, at the back of the report, there are, there's another 30 pages of 10-year trend graphs. It's really tables and graphs. It shows you how the city has changed over 10 years. How the, how the property value, the assessed value of the entire city has changed, all the overlapping taxes, not just the taxes that we impose on citizens, but all of the overlapping citizens, taxing agencies, the state, the county, the school district, all that. It has 10-year demographic trends, and it has 10-year staffing, what the different city departments have, have changed over time. So, we get all of our report done, and we send it off for peer review. Now, what is peer review? Finance Directors and Accountants and Controllers of other cities and agencies across the country. We all review each other's audited reports. And we get to put this page in our, in our report that says, we got theirs, we, we got this national seal of approval. The little paragraph there I've got circled in red says, this is our 34th consecutive year. That's amazing. I don't wanna be the guy that breaks that streak. That means that this city, for 34 consecutive years, has submitted audited financials and gotten this award. We have an award wall. Now, they got tired of, every, every city in America started getting these, they ran out of wall space. We used to get these wooden plaques with a big brass plate. What they've done now is they've switched to, these things are heavy. We get one for our budget and one for our audit. It's a slab of marble. And you get a little button for each year. So, this year, I've got an envelope. It's much lighter. I've got two little buttons. I don't know that we have a ceremony in finance, but you can see that this city has gotten consistently award-level budgets and audits for years, and we did again. I will close with this, the team that, the, the, the team that does it. We're a team of nine people. 20 years ago, the city had 300 employees. We had eight in Finance Department. Now, we're up to a city of 400, and we've got nine people. So, these are the nine people that do all your finances. So, who is this presentation to? It's to ourselves. It's to the governing body. It's to the citizens. And as you all point out, we should point out from time to time how the city is doing. And getting our audit complete was a, was a good time to do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council President?
It was interesting, wasn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. I was part of the exit conference, and excellent job. Thank you very much, Steve.
Yes, it's important that the auditors not go through finance, but they talk to you, governing members. So, thank you for participating. Your engagement's really important.
All right. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for this wonderful report. You know, when we work in the public sector, we don't often hear the good work that, that, you know, we did. We only hear when things go sideways, right? So, this is one of the things that I asked Steve to highlight, the work that he and his team did for the city. You know, I've been the Chair of the FedRAC, I don't know for how long, five, six years?
Long as I've been here.
I have so much fun. That's why I don't remember. And every year, I got an invite to attend the asset conference with the auditors.
And they give you a questionnaire about your view of our internal controls, too.
Exactly, right. And to be honest with you, for the last six years, I never once get nervous or doubt about the outcome of the report. That's how confident I am in your ability to lead your team. So, thank you. Thank you for doing that. You're not just managing the city budget, but you also made the right investment decision to generate income for the city. And you ensure that whatever we do in terms of financial is in full compliance with the law. So, again, I mean, I don't know how much I can say, but I really, really appreciate the work that you do and the work that your staff do. And, you know, on behalf of my committee, FedRAC, Councilmember Doby, Councilmember Daniel, and myself, thank you. Thank you for making our job so much easier.
Every, every one of you and everyone on my staff wants, I mean, as a profession, government finance, we try to be transparent and accountable, communicating it. Well, come on, we're accountants. We're not as good at communicating it. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, now moving on to Council Committee and Regional Committee Reports. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, first I would just like to reiterate what the Mayor already said about the Taste of Federal Way. Great job by, by Bill, by the Parks Department, by all the other people involved with it. Fantastic work. It was a great, great event, great community event that brings the, brings the community together. Our next Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meeting will be a week from tonight at 5 o'clock, right here on 10:14. So, hope to see all of you there for another rousing Parks Committee meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, our next meeting will be November 3rd, 2025, 5:00 PM in this, the chambers. We had our meeting last night from land use, and you'll see a lot of things coming forward in two weeks. We had discussion about sewers in our community. We've continued to talk about middle housing. We're continuing to talk about different ways ordinances can be constructed to work on affordable housing. I think it was the longest land use meeting we've had since this year. It went two and a half hours, I believe. Got a lot done. And so, we'd invite you all to be here November 3rd. There's some interesting things coming up, having to do with ordinances on affordable housing that we'll be talking about then.
Great. Thank you. Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, our committee met about two weeks ago, and we approved a lot of items on the consent, consent agenda today. Item B through G came from that meeting for your approval today. And then our next meeting is going to be October 28th at 5:00 PM in this, in this room. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Report, Councilmember Asef Adhossen.
Thank you, Mayor, and there's nothing to report, and we don't have a meeting scheduled at this point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, Regional Committees Report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. In Sound City News, the Public Issues Committee is meeting tomorrow at 7:00. Before COVID, we always had a pre-PIC meeting, and there was a topic that we would discuss. We're starting that up again. And at 6:15 tomorrow, and this is on Zoom, if anyone on council wants to attend, you can. It's gonna be on Hazardous Waste Program Update. And then at 7:00, the regular meeting starts. And the agenda includes SCA Regional Boards and Committee 2026 appointments. Those are open now if you want to apply, and they close in, on November 7th. We will also be talking about the Indigent Defense Case Load Standards Letter that PIC has written to the legislature. You can get a copy of that if you're interested, or I can get it to you, in the For Culture Open Doors presentation. That is all on Zoom, if you'd like to attend. Association of Washington Cities is having district workshops, and they're going to do one for this area. We're Area 13. At Twin Lakes Country Club on October 14th, from 11:30 to 1:00. You do need to pre-register. The last time they did a workshop, a district workshop, was in Federway, was in 2017. And the newsletter that came out last Wednesday has a lot of really good information, if you're interested. The Senior Advisory Commission meets tomorrow at 2:00, right here in the Hyllabus Room. And we have a very, very busy agenda. And I would encourage you, if you're interested, to come. If you would like to watch it on Zoom, please let us know, and we will make that possible. I would say the senior vouchers took 10 minutes on Saturday to hand out 60 vouchers. The seniors are very appreciative of that. And every, every Saturday, it's, it's faster and faster. So, they stand in line for about 25 minutes beforehand, and I always count to make sure that there aren't 60 people in line, because I don't want the person who might be 61, because they wouldn't be able to get one. I don't want them standing in line. National League of Cities, I've attended a number of meetings over the last three weeks since our last meeting. And as Chair of Skateboard, was the Chair of the Joint Regional Transportation Boards Meeting that we hold once a year. And we learned all about FIFA and how the county and the cities and the ports are all working to make transportation function when those games are going on. It sounds very complicated, but it sounds like they've got a good handle on it. This is Hispanic Heritage Month, and according to the census, we have about 17.8% of our residents are Hispanic. And it's, the Heritage Month goes from September 15th to October 15th. residents are Hispanic, and it's, the Heritage Month goes from September 15 to October 15. And Mayor, a few meetings ago, I talked about our pivotal partnership with the chamber, and we had only voted on it for one year. Is that something we need to vote on again, or could you just do that?
All right.
I'll check again. I went back after you made that comment, and I looked back, and we had, the motion was for both years.
It was for one year.
Well, no, no. The agreement's for one year, the funding is for...
The amount, there was a comment that we're going to become partners, and I believe it was, I'll double-check again, but I thought it was for both.
I just want to make sure we do it.
Yes.
Whatever. I know that they haven't received any...
I remember you made that comment. I went back and looked at the tape and, or listened to the tape.
If it makes it easier, there was an amended motion to it. It's on the same one that I sent you guys for the last one about the health, the police mental health person, same timeframe.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Council President Gertma.
Thank you. Councilmember Honda, would you mind reminding everybody about the vouchers for the seniors? Is there anything that they have to provide? Can they just show up? How much are they?
All they have to sign is their name and their age, and it's $10 to be used on produce at the farmer's market on the same day.
And that also helps the farmers.
Yeah.
So, thank you. I have also preregistered for the AWC workshop, which is going to be in our city, so we'll let you know as soon as that's over. We'll have a report for you on that. AWC is Association of Washington Cities, which are all the cities in Washington State, but this happens to be just the cities in our section. So, one last thing, without going through the entire listing of all the things that are going on in our community, Councilmember Honda, Walsh, and Dovi and I, we're at the food bank. You know, the food bank in Federal Way has moved to 272nd and Pack Highway, which is down, it's at the, there's a workforce housing there, and it's actually in the Market. It's called the Market. It's a little grocery store, but if you want to donate, especially for the holidays, like we've got Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas coming up, you can drive down there, can just stay in your car, just drive around to the back if you want to drop off food. If you want to partake at the food bank, you can park in the, park and ride, and walk over and get a number, it's early in the morning, like 8:00 in the morning, and then you can go through the food bank if you need to supplement your food at the end of the month, which we find a lot of people have that problem. So, if you want to donate, that's where you go now. You just go to the back. It's very easy to do. Look for the Market, the little, looks like a store. You just drive around to the back and drop off there. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment on the food bank?
Yeah.
They made a comment that this is a bumper apple crop year. I mean, my trees have put up more apples than I know what to do with, and they said if anybody was gleaning apples, they would gladly take them at the food bank. And I know there's lots of trees around Federal Way that I've seen that nobody's picked, but just something, if you've got some time and you have an apple tree, I mean, I got, like I say, I've got more bushels of apples off of my trees in my yard than I've ever gotten, so maybe somebody knows where to glean some apples, and the food bank would love them, they said.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we're on to public comment, the most important part of the meeting. You've got three minutes. Green means go. Yellow means you've got 30 seconds. Red means please stop. I don't like to interrupt people. Council has requested that you identify the community you live in. We do not need your address. Oftentimes, it's put on the pink sheets, and everyone knows the rules are on the sheets. So, I'll call the names of the folks, and if you could queue toward the back. We'll have first Jerry Knutson, then Katie Astaron, then Anna Patrick, and then Harold Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell and council members. I'm Jerry Knutson. I'm the president of the Historical Society of Federal Way, and I'm here to just give a little report. First of all, we have an annual meeting coming up in a week and a half, on the 18th, and I've got a couple of little notices here, so I'll leave those out here. If somebody is interested in attending, I'd love to have you. It's going to be on the 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00, and at that event, we're going to, we're going to recognize Shirley Charnell. Does anyone remember Shirley from way back? Anyway, she's, we just recognize a distinguished volunteer every year, and so, she was like our first president, very involved in the organization, and she's passed away, but we're going to get her name permanently installed on our plaque, so that's going to be there. We're also going to give a report on what we've done. One of the major accomplishments this year was getting a new roof on the Denny Cabin, and that was a major, major thing, because we want that Denny Cabin to be in existence for a long time, and a roof is really important, so we have a really nice new roof. If you drive by on the cabins, 348th, you'll see a brand-new roof up there. It was about 25 years old, and it's a cedar roof, so that was a major accomplishment. But we've got some other things we'll report on, and by the way, the cabins were open once, once a month on a Saturday, and this Saturday, the cabins are going to be open. I'll be there, and so, that's from like 11:00 to 3:00, and we're open from May to October. So, if you're out on Saturday and want to just stop by, pull in the cabins, and we have them open, and you can go in, actually go inside the cabins. Then, one thing, the event's going to be at the Federal Way Senior Center. Now, if you look at the card, it says it's out on 4016 South 352nd, so, and it says Auburn, Washington, but they're not in, you know, from the Historical Society's perspective, we consider Federal Way to be the school district, not the city. And for those that may not know, the school districts are about 100 years older than the city. They were formed back in 1880, 1890s, 1900, and there used to be five school districts in Federal Way, if you can believe that, but that's how it was, and so, this, the Senior Center is in, within the school district property, boundaries, and so, that's why we consider it to be, it's Federal Way. But the address, it used to be everybody got their mail through Auburn, Washington, if you lived here, back in the 50s, and then they started calling it Federal Way. Now, we have a post office, but that wasn't until like 1970 that they had a post office in Federal Way. So, in any event, we'd love to have everybody attend and come to the meeting. We have plenty of room, and it's going to, the Senior Center is actually a historic structure over there. It's the old Lakeland Community Club, and for those that aren't familiar with community clubs, there's still a mere, excuse me, there's a North Lake Community Club still in existence, there's a Star Lake Improvement Club still in existence, and our Brook Lake property was the Brook Lake Community Club, and that property was donated to the city 10 years ago. And so, these community organizations are very important, so this is one of those community organizations that operates. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Katie Astaron.
All right. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for having me. My name is Katie Astaron, and I'm a resident of the Lake Grove-Lakota community, and tonight, I'd like to talk to you all regarding the Federal Way Maintenance and Operations Facility project. Firstly, I'd start, I'd like to start by thanking you, Jim, for your quick response to my previous email regarding this matter and some other items. However, I wanted to ask several more questions tonight to provide more awareness of this project to the community. I feel like there's been what seems to be more confusion than transparency regarding this project and its allocation of public art funds. Now, EJ provided a very detailed memo of the budget totaling $40 million, 696,422, roughly, for the contract value. I'm not sure if this is still the same as that memo from April 1st. I appreciate any updated information, but initially, this provided an estimate of $250,000 for the artist call, and this has since been reduced to $174,998 for the total of the commissioned art. And this was after the budget was recalculated to reduce demolition and other items from the contract value I should have been done initially, but with this, there was also 566,846 used of the public art fund in the preliminary budget, and also, still, that same amount that did not budge in the finalized budget for the designed wall, which inherently is a security fence. But another thing I want to point about this memo is it's iterated very well that the selection process for the artist call would be mirrored to what was done with the PAC process for efficiency purposes, and I think this is really great, but I'd like to talk further about how this is compared to what was done in the budget for the public arts between the design and commissioned art previously. And additionally, I know this is a very limited project, especially the availability and the space for the public art to go, and there is an Operation Maintenance Art Advisory Council currently, but I think Federal Way residents deserve to view it and express their opinion before council votes on this final artist call. In the memo, it projected that this artist selection would be complete, and the artwork development and implementation would begin as of September 2025. I haven't seen any further details regarding this. I have heard that there's now three narrowed-down selectionists, and so, I'd like to know what updates the council does have on this project and when we can expect that final vote. I understand there's only four more council meetings, and they are wanting to begin this project next year. Thank you.
All right. Anna Patrick.
Evening, Mayor and Council, longtime member of Federal Way or resident of Federal Way. And so, mine's just really short and sweet. I just want to bring up a tree that is a hazardous tree on a property across from Mary Lake Elementary School, and I've been noticing it along my walk. It's across the street, kind of overhanging the power lines, and I'm concerned about it. When it gets more windy, I'm concerned that the tree is going to snap and fall and cause the power lines to fall, right where students are walking to and from, and residents walking their dogs. So, I posted it to Eyes on Federal Way. There was a comment that it's not the city's problem, that it's, I think, the residents' problem, so, and also, there, I think it was something about calling Puget Sound Energy, so I tried that. They wanted me to put my address in, but it's not my address. So, I kind of got stuck there, and I'm hoping you can help to address it. I know it's not city property, I know it belongs to a resident, but I'm hoping we can get this addressed before it gets windy and dangerous for kids walking to and from school. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll hear all the public comments, and we'll follow up. Thank you very much. All right. Harold Booker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Harold Booker. I am a 60-plus-year resident of Federal Way. I live in the Dash Point area of Federal Way now, and tonight's extemporaneous. I had a topic I was going to talk about, and on the way here, I said, nah, that's not what I want to talk about. I wanted to talk a little bit about the energy in our world. Our world is very contentious nowadays. There's a lot of back and forth and a lot of negative energy, and part of that is from leaders at all levels, but part of it is just what's going on. And in reality, at the local level, what is the most important thing? As leaders in our community, there is a, two roles. You wear a couple of hats. Sometimes, you wear the hat of an advocate, and you are advocating for a constituent or a project or something, but you also wear a second hat, because as soon as you've provided the positives and the negatives of your project, or whatever you're advocating for, you also have the role of being a listener and being a communicator and being, looking to create the most positive environment by listening to and finding the nuggets from the other members who have other voices and other perspectives, and trying to bring those together. And sometimes, we get locked into, I'm advocating for X, and I forget my listening skills. In my work, I'm, can be a great IT project manager or technical person, but when I really became good, it was when I learned to bring multiple perspectives together to create a much stronger idea than mine. We build upon that idea to get the best, and that, those are the projects that survive, that live. I will start closing. My grandmother used to talk, tell us all sorts of things. One of them was to surround yourself with people who add to the equation, which was always very poignant. But the one that really resonates with me is that you have to believe in yourself, but you don't have to be brilliant to be successful. You must surround yourself with positive achievers or visionaries who add strength to the cause, the team, the project you're working on, and then, any goal is achievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Janice Clark, and then Dan Bundy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm still homeless in the 98002 by way of 336th Street. By way of introduction, I am Dr. Janice Clark, the biological grandmother of a Federal Way student that's in running start at Pierce College, a senior at Decatur High School. She's also the president of the Black Student Union at Decatur for the last two years. But I rise, Mr. Mayor and Council, to request support for veterans for our 13th Annual Safe Homes, a nonprofit I started 30 years ago. We have our 13th Annual Veterans Day, always on Veterans Day, and I want to submit to you for your consideration that the city would be willing to sponsor at least 50 veterans representing out of King County, but tag Federal Way, you're it, and that would mean five tables of 10 veterans sitting around the table. All the veterans that show up get an award, so it's a very important event to show our true support. You know, I served too for many, many, many years, and it's just the way that we give back and continue to support how important that we want to lift up the issues still concerning veterans, especially those of us that 100% service-connected, that are in need of different levels of support. So, there's eight pages here. I'm going to give you my time back, and I thank you for an opportunity tonight to submit this request. Should I give it to the clerk?
Actually, if you can give it to Bill Vedino there. Bill is going to be following up with you.
Okay.
And I'll say that when we get all done with public comment, but since you're right there, Bill's right there.
Yes, sir.
But thank you, Dr. Clark.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Dan Bundy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the community. My name is Dan Bundy. I'm a resident of Twin Lakes. I actually live on Lake Gene. I've been here for about five years. I'm originally from Seattle. I would just like to say thank you all for your service and for your hard work, because I know it's not easy, and I've also come to share what's been on my heart. I've been wanting to come to a council meeting for about three months now, and just time hasn't made it right, but tonight, I'm here, and I'm thankful, because I'm not here to point fingers at anyone. I'm here to ask, how can I get involved? What's definitely on my heart is the homelessness and the public safety issues, our children's safety. Those are things that are dear to my heart, and I know that we can do a better job, but we can't sit back and wait for other people to do it. We all have to get involved. We all have a part to play. We're living in some very strange times, but we can do better. I know we can. It breaks my heart when I see the homeless. I'm a believer. I believe in God. I believe in Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior, and when I see the homeless and I think about what I've read through the Bible and what I know from the Bible, that we have to look out for each other. That's what makes this country the greatest country in the world, is that we are built on those morals, but we've somehow, money, fame, oh, it's all about me, it's all about getting the bag, we got to change it. And the mental illness, the drug abuse in front of our children, in front of our babies, the abuse that we allow to happen to our babies, man, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to spend time getting, finding out how I can play my part, how I can do more to help to make Federal Way a pleasant place to live, where we don't have to fear going to the store, we don't have to fear that somebody's going to break into our house... that somebody's going to break into our house at night, we don't have to fear that if we call the police, they're not going to arrive or we're not going to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And do we have any online? All right. Okay. So in follow-up, Ms. Astaron, thank you very much for your comments. EJ, would you, we have the pink sheet here with the contact with Ms. Astaron. Would you follow up with some of the questions? And please actually, that information you provide, please make sure the council gets that as well. Do you have anything to add in the short term?
No. So the call for artists is out and it's not intended to be brought at this point this year. So it will, it is coming back to council for council selection, but we don't have a date and the artists are developing their concepts right now. So when we have that, we'll certainly share it.
Okay. Great. And then we've got the phone number and I believe email for Ms. Astaron, if you could follow up with her.
I'll just mark.
And make sure we've got updated information. And whatever you share with her, please share with council, obviously. Thank you. Okay. Okay. And Anna Patrick's comment as well. Would you follow up with this, Ms. Patrick, about?
Yeah, I'm going to grab an address from her. I missed that one.
Very good.
When we get done.
Okay. Thank you very much. All I heard was trees and I thought EJ. All right. So Anna, we're all over it. We're on it, like Bluebonnet, as we used to say. All right. Okay. And Dr. Clark, actually, Bill, you're going to take care of that. You're going to, let's get back, let's, you and I talk about this tomorrow. Let's have Ben in the meeting and then we'll get back to Dr. Clark tomorrow. Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Clark, for coming again. And then Mr. Bundy. I'm going to have Keith, would you, would you spend just a few moments with Mr. Bundy? Get his contact information. And Mr. Bundy, my thought here is, is that Keith Niven, he's our Community Development Director, he oversees the CD, the Community Development Department, in that has human services. And so there's all kinds of things. We've got some new, we do have ongoing shelter in our community, but we've got several that are sort of in the pipeline and that are being done. So I'll have, I'll ask Mr. Niven to make a contact with you tonight, get information, and we'll follow up. Okay. I think that should do it. I want to do say thanks, thanks again to Jerry for your, Jerry Canutia, for your years of service to the Historical Society. Everybody on this dais brags about the Historical Society at some point. So I think that's it. So thank you. And like I said, this is the most important thing we do to hear from the people that we work for, which is you. Okay. Thank you very much. Now we are on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through council committee. I'm going to go ahead and read each one of the items. And council, if you have an item you want pulled for separate consideration, let me know and we'll handle it separately. Okay. Consent agenda, item A, minutes for the September 16th, 2025 City Council Special Meeting and Regular Meeting. Item B, vouchers, July 1 through July 31, 2025, payroll vouchers, July 1 through July 31, 2025. Item C, vouchers, August 1 to August 31 of this year, and payroll vouchers, August 1 through August 31 of this year. Then item D, monthly financial report, July and August of this year. Item E, tree service contract. Item F, Palisades Park pathway. And item G, civic plus agreement for C Click Fix or Eyes on Federway. All right. Council, are there any items you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right. Hearing none. Council President Kochmark.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Been a motion a second to approve items A through G. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matters passed unanimously. All right. Item six, council business, youth commission appointments. And we'll have Councilmember Walsh.
Yes, I move to appoint the following to the youth commission. Jaden Marzon to position number five for a term to expire August 31, 2027. Isabella Nguyen to position number six for a term to expire August 31, 2027. Diana Favela Lopez to position number seven for a term to expire August 31, 2027. And Justin Sin to alternate position two for a term to expire August 31, 2027.
Second.
It's been a motion a second to confirm, for the council to confirm the individuals that were named. And is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Or the individuals are confirmed? Thank you unanimously. Item B, planning commission appointments. Councilmember Dovi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just for those who don't know, we did interviews this evening for people for open commission positions. This happens to be for planning, our planning commission, which many of our land use goes through them and then it comes to the L U T C committee and then to the council. So these are very active committee appointments. And I'd like to move to appoint Malin Barnes to position four for the term to expire September 30th, 2029, and John Fife to the alternate position number one for a term to expire September 30, 2028.
Second.
It's been a motion a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the appointments?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. The individuals confirmation passed unanimously. Item seven A has been removed from the agenda. Seven B, second reading, Council Bill 915, ordinance condemnation, Washington State Route 99. This is Pacific Highway and South 373rd Street Roundabout. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 915, ordinance condemnation of property, Washington State Route 99, Pacific Highway South and South 373rd Street Roundabout. An ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, providing for the acquisition of certain property for the purpose of constructing right-of-way improvements in the vicinity of SR 99 at South 373rd Street, known as the SR 99 at South 373rd Street Roundabout and Access Management Project, describing the public use and necessity of such property, directing staff to exhaust reasonable negotiation efforts to purchase such property, providing for the condemnation of the property, and directing the city attorney to initiate all necessary actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law for said condemnation if attempts to purchase are not successful.
All right. Council, you may recall that we talked about this at the last city council meeting. Before I call for the motion by Councilmember Dovi, was there anybody that would want a, remember, we had that discussion and I believe the landowner was here. Did anybody want to hear from Director EJ Walsh about this in any detail or make sure that the, I just want to make that offer because I know there was discussion about before second reading. Councilmember McDaniel?
I believe the question we had is if the gentleman was going to provide a legitimate, I want to say proposal, but it's not proposal. What is the appraisal?
Yeah.
Was an actual legitimate appraisal actually provided?
Not today, no.
All right. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anything else, council? Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Could we explain a little bit about the process of why we're doing this and that this takes a while to do? It doesn't happen, you know, overnight.
Our Public Works Director, EJ Walsh.
Certainly. So good evening, council. So yes, as you correctly stated, this is a process and a tool. So condemnation is a method where there's an essential public need for public safety to construct improvements for the betterment of the community. In this case, that is the roundabout at 99 and 373rd. So we have approached the property owners and have attempted through negotiation to purchase the properties for various reasons. That has not closed. So at this point, condemnation is the next step in the process. To the point that you just said, does not mean that it's not a taking, we still have to pay for it and it doesn't happen instantaneously. So it is a tool to see that the project is constructed and to continue the negotiation process when parties are not willing to compromise or not willing to negotiate in good faith. So ultimately, if negotiations do not prove to be fruitful, the city does have the ability to take it to a judge through the condemnation proceedings and let the judge be the arbiter and determine the fair market value on what the property owner has paid out. So this is the start of that process. To your point, this is a long process with multiple checks. And frankly, condemnation is set up to protect the property owner. It is not set up to help the government agency. It's set up to make sure that property owners are treated fairly by government agencies that are trying to build a project. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. And this is not the whole property. It's just portions of pieces of property.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember, any other, Councilmember Dovi?
I was just going to make a motion.
All right. I don't see any other lights on, so please proceed.
Yes, I move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion a second to approve second reading of the listed ordinance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. All right. Now we're on to item C, second reading, Council Bill 916, Ordinance Development Agreement Code Amendment. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 916, Ordinance Development Agreement Code Amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, relating to development agreements, amending Federway Revised Code 1985010 and Federway Revised Code 1985030.
All right. Councilmember Dovi?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item D, second reading, Council Bill 917, Ordinance Middle Housing Code Cleanup, Title 18. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 917, Ordinance Middle Housing Code Cleanup, Title 18. An ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, relating to middle housing, amending Federway Revised Code 1855060.
All right. Councilmember Dovi?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item E, second reading, Council Bill 918, Ordinance Middle Housing Code Cleanup, Title 19. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 918, Ordinance Middle Housing Code Cleanup, Title 19. An ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, relating to middle housing, amending Federway Revised Code 1905040 and 19110010.
All right. And let's see here. Councilmember Dovi?
Yes, can I make one comment before I make the motion?
Yes, sir.
Just so those, we've been making these motions. These all have to do with affordable housing, middle housing and cleaning up code. We can go in very fast on it, but I just thought maybe we should make that comment because people are going, what are they doing up there so quick? But these are all things that we've been working on for a year and we're getting to the very end of the year where we're finally doing everything that the City of Federway can do to have affordable housing in our community and make it so developers and people who want to improve their property can do it efficiently and we give them good information.
Could you explain the first reading, second reading, and what we do at first versus second?
Yeah, we do first readings, in which we've already done and we've had the presentations. The second reading is we're just codifying it and put it into our code. So it goes very, very quick and no presentations. So I will move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
All right. It's been a motion a second. And Councilmember Dovi, thank you for doing that. I kind of had the same thought. I thought we're kind of running through all these and I appreciate you doing that. All right. There's been a motion a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is passed unanimously. We are now on to item eight, council reports. Councilmember Asefa Dawson, you are first to report.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm actually here in DC at the Marriott Marquis, where we always stay. So people were confused that I was here and none of you were here because they didn't realize I was for a different conference. But I'm here for Prosperity Summit and it was really, it's really a good conference talking about financial security or insecurity and how we can help people become exercising their wealth or how to build wealth. And one of the topics really was homeownership and reimagining how homeownership could be obtained by people if they're interested or if they want to, because a lot of times we are scared. I was scared too by my first house and it took a group of people to encourage me and tell me that I can do it. And I'm so glad I did it. But also how we can really help people. And I, and I hope that at some point, since we're doing the financial literacy, we could also start talking about opportunities and possibilities for homeownership. And so hopefully that could be our next discussion. And I'm taking away so much from this conference, even around entrepreneurship and different things that we could really encourage our residents to participate in. But I think it takes a lot of energy and willpower for us to do that. But I'm really encouraged at this conference and I will see you at the next council meeting, I believe. I also have another conference I might be away for. But yeah, that's what I'm doing and that's why I'm not with you today. And I'm glad that I was able to join and thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Councilmember McDaniel?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all the committee chairs. I got responses to my emails and we've been able to work some stuff out and I appreciate that allowed me to move some of my items forward. And the second thing, Mayor, I'd like to continue our conversation about civics. I had some questions last week and if you don't mind, if you could give me an update on that.
Sure. You bet. Okay. No, no, we'll, yeah, I'll send you an email.
Okay. Well, if it's an email, then I'll bounce over. Over the last couple of weeks that we've been off, I had the opportunity to go to a couple of locations. One of them was a treatment facility for mental health down in the Spanaway area. And it is an interesting, I don't even know what the term to use really is, place to go to see how people, what state people are in in this world right now. We see a lot of this stuff on the streets. The streets are just pretty much the edge of that. And one of the things that I've realized as I've been researching into this and looking into it more is that capacity is one of the biggest issues. And when I mean capacity, we have seen a dramatic growth in the unhoused homeless, drug addiction, whatever terminology you want. And there is just literally not enough beds, facilities, or any way to treat everybody who needs help right now. So I would say that everybody on this council who's going to be sticking around for a while, this will be a problem. It's not going anywhere anytime soon. And there is going to be needs for some people to make some decisions and maybe even do some piloting programs to figure out what is actually going to work to make this feasible. On top of that, I also went to a LINK program. LINK is an organization that works with youth and they are, it stands for Leadership, Intervention, and Change. They mostly work with youth that's violence, gang-related in the King County area. And Chief, we don't always get along on a lot of things, but I'm okay with that. I believe in Proverbs 27:17, iron sharpens iron, and it's sometimes a little bit back and forth. But your SROs, at the Decatur High School especially, they have produced some of the most referrals to LINK in 2024. There was a lot of cities engaged with this organization, including Seattle and Renton and Bellevue and stuff like that. Federway came in number one for the amount of kids that have been referred back to this organization with 30. The same thing with the number of cities, for the cities where students that are actually being serviced by this organization. Federway put in 22, where Seattle had 27. Those are the top two. So there is a lot of need for capacity and also a lot of probably some new ideas and some changes that need to be made in order to figure out what is going to be the best solution for the, for the drug, the homeless and the youth violence that we do see in the city. A gentleman I got to listen to was a gentleman named Davis Lewis. He's a psychiatrist at UW and he had some very interesting information on youth and what potential items are possible. He also works with the Seattle Police Department. I'll be forwarding that information on to Chief and I'll be interested in maybe having a conversation and seeing if there's anything we can do in that area. Thank you.
I may be thinking about iron sharpens iron for days. So that's.
It's 100% truth, especially in this area, man. We will conflict a lot and I don't see there's a problem with conflict. It makes you really have to think through your ideas and why you're so passionate for it. And sometimes that iron makes you sharper because you realize that you're dull in certain areas that you need to be sharpened up on. So like I said, I do not mind the conflict. I think it's good for us sometimes, as long as we both have the vision of what is best for our citizens and our city.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll get, we'll follow up. We'll get to, we'll follow up. I want to make sure I know exactly--
Well, and the other thing I wanted to follow up on is, a lot of people don't understand, and this is something that I want them to get educated on. As a strong mayor, we may vote for people, that does not mean they have to get hired. I mean, there is, there are some things, and that's one of the things I want people to understand, is that, well, we may have some say, there is a limitation, a separation of powers that I don't think people totally understand until they sit up here and try to do stuff.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. I recently attended a fundraiser at the Weyerhauser corporate building, now IRG, for a Pacific bonsai museum. It was their annual fundraising afternoon. Dan Fulton, who was, is a past CEO of the Weyerhauser company, was there, as were many members of the Weyerhauser family. They raised, I think, $250,000 that afternoon. But we are so lucky that this is in our city, and it's one of the very few bonsai museums that exist, and it's free. It's free to the public. They ask for a donation, but it's not required. So if you haven't been there, I would really encourage you to go. You'll learn a lot about bonsai. You'll also see amazing trees that are, some are hundreds of years old. And it's not everyone who gets to do that, so I would encourage you to go. It's right next to the Rodedendian Gardens, which is also an amazing addition to our city, and we're very lucky that we have that, too. So that is held once a year, and they were sold out. They had not a seat left, which is amazing for a fundraiser. Valley Cities recently had a community coffee chat right next door, and it was the same day as the Good Eggs Breakfast, and just about the same time. And so anyway, I chose to go to that, and we, last year, they talked about drug use. This year, they talked about homelessness and some other concerns in the community. I would encourage councilmembers to continue involvement with the Valley Cities. They're doing a great job here in our community. The Historical Society of Federal Way was here tonight, and you all heard about the annual meeting coming up. And I kind of had asked if they would talk about membership, because one of the ways everyone in the community can support the Historical Society is through a membership. And it is not, it is not expensive to be a member of this organization. And I'm going to tell you how much it costs. Individual members are $25. A household, two adults and two children under 18 are, it's $35. A senior, which is considered 55 or older, is 15. Military is 15. A nonprofit organization like the Kiwanis or Seroptimus is $15 a year. A bronze membership is $100. Silver is 250, and gold is 500. And I will tell you that this organization is one of the organizations that need our support, and I would just encourage you to rush to your iPads or your computers and just sign up today to be a member. They are the only organization that's saving our history. And one of the things about my family is, my grandfather was born in Des Moines, Washington, in, I think, 1900. He and his brothers and his cousin formed a logging company down in Redondo, and they owned property down there, and then they owned property throughout Federal Way and sold some of their properties for, to our school district. But I was a little surprised when I opened up the history book of Federal Way one day years and years ago, and I saw my grandpa's name and his brother's names, and I went to our family Bible, and I'm like, that is my family. I didn't know that he had a logging company. He died when I was a tiny little girl. My grandma died when I was young also, and they didn't talk about that. So you can learn a lot through our Historical Society, and I would encourage you not only to become a member, but to visit them and to go to the annual meeting. Yesterday, I saw something in Federal Way that just made me very, very happy. I was at the Light by 7-Eleven on 330th and First Avenue, and there is an elderly gentleman, and he was pushing a motorized wheelchair, and it wasn't working. And those, I have one, and they're extremely heavy because they have batteries on them that are heavy, and he was struggling. And I was going, I was trying to debate how I could pull over to help him and how I could help him. And just then, two young people came out of a driveway there and started helping him push it. In fact, they had him sit in it so they could push it. I went and picked up somebody. I came back along First Avenue a few minutes later, and there were not just two people pushing it, but I believe there were four, farther down First Avenue. And I think that just says a lot about the people here in Federal Way and how caring they are. And I hope he got his battery charged and was able to move on later that day. And mayor, could we get an update on the wind phone that's going in Adumas Bay eventually?
There was an update at the last Parks Commission meeting, or Parks meeting. John?
Wind phone is built and completed and will be installed, I believe, next week.
Awesome. Do you know where it's going to be installed at?
At Adumas Bay.
But like, behind on, in a completed area?
Very, in the area that was chosen and approved by council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Tran?
No report from me, mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I thought it was very interesting. In our special meeting today, one of our people we interviewed and now just appointed to the, to the--
Planning?
Planning Commission, John Fife, talked about how he transports people, ship crews that are getting off of a ship and need to go to the airport and go to different places, and talks about how when he has them overnight somewhere, it is in Federal Way because of all the amenities that Federal Way has. And I thought, wow, that is great to hear something so, so positive where they're able to be there. He says that nowhere else in the, in the area is as, works as well as Federal Way to meet their needs. And I thought, you know, that's a big plug for, for Federal Way. And so I just wanted to, you know, Meredith, if you're back there, maybe you can, you know, you know, have that as one of the selling points for Federal Way. We do have a lot of things going for us here. Another thing that we have going, we have a lot of wonderful nonprofits that work in the community, and a number of them have been mentioned here this evening, the Federal Way Caregivers Network, Fusion, Multiservice Center, the bonsai garden just now, the Historical Society, the Federal Way Arts Foundation. All of these are oriented here to help the Federal Way become a better place. There's one more nonprofit that's based here in Federal Way that lets the world know that we're not only concerned about here, but we're concerned about helping people in other places as well. And that is Proyecto Honduras, another nonprofit that just does a tremendous amount of work to help the very poorest of the poor in Honduras with clinics and schools and things. And it was founded by Evelyn and Jose Castalar, who live in the Twin Lakes area, and it's a, you know, 100% volunteer program that helps literally hundreds and hundreds of people. And this last, last Saturday, we had the fundraiser for it, raised a lot of money. Melissa was there. I think that there may have been some others here. I know Judge Larson was there. And, and it does just a tremendous amount of good, letting, and so I just want to let the world know that we're not only concerned about us here, but we look outward as well. And, and also a big plug for the work that Proyecto Honduras does. But part of that was a, that the, most years, it's a, been a dinner and auction. This year, it was a bingo and comedy night. And the comedy, I guess he's local as well, and he mentioned here in Federal Way, Brett Hollis, a wonderful comedian. I mean, I'd say that he was clean comedy, and I'd say that he stands up there with, with a lot of the, you know, nationally-known comedians. I mean, it was, it was great. And so anyway, so we have a lot of things going for us here. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah, just a few things to report. I wanted to report on the Financial Peace Class, the Bob Town Financial Peace Class at the community center. We're, it's going again. We're in our third week, this Thursday. Thirty-plus people are attending, and we have over 170 graduates. But the comment I was going to make, there was a, I don't do much on social media. Every now and then, I'll go on LinkedIn, and somebody was making a comment about federal, the program. So I made my comment, and I talked about Federal Way and what we're doing and 170 graduates, and 483 people liked what Federal Way was doing with financial peace. So I thought that was good to say. Federal Way's out there on LinkedIn. The mayor talked about the Hachinoi students that came through a little while ago. This is the fifth year I've been able to have them stay at my house. I've always had two stay. Next year, I just put it out there on people's calendar, it's going to come around again, and if anybody wants to maybe talk to these kids and have them stay for the night for dinner, that's probably will be coming around. So it's always a fun thing. I use Google to talk to them in Japanese. I'm not very fluent yet. And then, one thing I'd like to hear about is, you know, we have Walmart, who will be closing the small Walmart. There might be some opportunities that community development, CD, might want to talk to, and as a city, we should at least know what our options are, because that is a valuable 10-acre piece of land right down in our core that, like when this council and the mayor did something with Target Forward Thinking, we're now able to do a town center, so we might want to have that discussion sometime. So that's my report today, and thank you very much for all being here.
Thank you. There was actually, just moving on that property, we're just, there's, there's a lot of information flow and some interest in the property, but that's developing. So as that develops, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, council president?
Sure. So just to reiterate, so just to keep us straight with what's going on in the next two weeks before our next council meeting. On the ninth, Councilmember Walsh is going to join us for our agenda-setting meeting instead of, he's taking the place of Councilmember Dovi. And then on the 10th, Friday, is the Super Supper, which is at 5:30, just to remind you, at the Christian Faith Center. And then on the 17th, is the Food Drive, and we start at Fred Meyer, which I believe, according to our calendar, we're supposed to be there at 9:00 AM, 9:00 AM on Saturday. And then coming up after that, there is a Multiservice Center Helps Luncheon, which is going to be at the Performing Arts Center, and that's a good thing for us to go to, to help the Multiservice Center. And by the way, mayor, I just wanted to tell you that since they moved the food bank, and I don't know if it was associated with it or not, we don't appear to have the people chanting or staying on the sidewalk in front of the Day Center and the Multiservice Center. I've been going by there periodically, and I don't see them. So I'm not sure if that's related or not, but I thought that was interesting. And then on the 18th, which is the next Saturday, there's a Phenomenal She, which is to help young women, diverse young women. They're going to have a ribbon cutting at their facility, which is at 16th and Dashpoint Road, right by the Starbucks there. That's at 10:00 AM. And then finally, I want to say, Bill, you know, with the farmer's market, I want to say thank you. At the last market Taste of Federal Way, you gave out certificates to the kids for $4.50 to go buy vegetables. So my little granddaughter got a certificate for $4.50 to buy some vegetables. Now, she's been, a woman who has been helping raise her is from Thailand, and this woman from Thailand has taught her how to eat sliced cucumbers raw. So we went to buy $4.50 worth of cucumbers, which, which to me was amazing, that a kid would eat raw cucumbers rather than chocolate, and, and so she could take them back to Nui, which is the name of the lady who's been helping raise her. So they had fresh cucumbers, thank you very much. And then we explained to her that that also helped the farmers, because then the farmers got the money for the $4.50. So thank you, it was a great idea. It was a great idea to teach your children and also a great way to help the farmers. Thanks.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, well, council, a great job this evening. Thank you to the staff. Thank you for everybody here that we work for. Thank you for your comments. And with that, we are adjourned.